Next level.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight. Tonight is the City of Aspen City Council Regular Meeting for May 10, 2022. That'll be a call to order. Could we have a roll call for attendance, please?
Councilor Doyle.
Councilor Howenstein.
Councilor Mazero.
Three D, I believe.
Councilor Richards.
Mayor Torrey.
I'm here. This evening, we have a couple of public appearances and scheduled public appearances. I'm going to start off with a proclamation from the City of Aspen for some of our recreation employees. Pardon me. Normally, I stand up for these, but our microphones are a little sensitive, so I'm going to stay seated for this. But as I call your name, we'd love to have you come up and stand on the side here and just get some recognition. Proclamation of the City of Aspen, Colorado Incorporated, 1881. Whereas the City of Aspen Recreation Employees John French, Lee Liebman, Steve Saunders.
Come on up.
Thor Knutson, Picking County Sheriff Anthony Tadaro, medical professionals Dr. Giora Han, and Paige Shapiro acted quickly and saved the life of an adult Hockey League player during a playoff game as a player went into cardiac arrest on the ice April 8, 2022. And whereas John French stopped play, recognized an issue, Thor called 911 and brought the AED to Lee. Meanwhile, Steve Saunders removed the player's helmet as Dr. Giora Han performed rescue breathing and Anthony Tadaro and Paige Shapiro gave chest compressions. Whereas, as Thor Knutson directed emergency medical services to the ice, Lee Liebman administered the AED four times while Dr. Giora Han, Anthony Tadaro, and Paige Shapiro continued with CPR. Whereas upon EMS arrival, the hockey player had a pulse, was breathing, and has since recovered from the incident. Whereas, had it not been for quick action by Anthony Tadaro, Dr. Giora Han, John French, Lee Liebman, Paige Shapiro, Stephen Saunders, and Thor Knutson, the outcome may have been different. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor, city council, and the citizens of Aspen hereby proclaim honored recognition for Anthony Tadaro, Dr. Giora Han, John French, Lee Liebman, Paige Shapiro, Stephen Saunders, and Thor Knutson for their heroism and dedication, setting a great example of teamwork on and off the ice and the importance of the CPR training and AED training this day, the 10th of May, 2022. On behalf of all of us, obviously, thank you so much. It was Billy, I believe, that went down on the ice, and he is recovering, which is a great thing for our community. I don't know if any of you care to say any words, but we invite you to, if you like to. There's a microphone right behind you. If you want to hit a green button and say anything you like.
I'm just really gratefully made it, and the training works.
Yeah. This is not your first incident that you've been involved in, is that right?
Uh, in what matter?
Coming to the aid or rescue of somebody in need.
Yeah, I used to work for the sheriff's office in the jail.
Well, thank you for all of your service.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else care for any words?
Only a microphone for my voice, but Lee was a big, big person that night. Getting in there and leaving the medical park first, and everybody else followed suit. It was a good day for Billy.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Yeah, I won't use the microphone either, but yeah, just thankful for the way that everything turned out. The outcome could have been much different without the help of these three and those that were mentioned, and quick action definitely helped with that. And just thankful that everything turned out. Turned out okay, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Torrey and City Council. It's an honor to be here, and obviously, we're all very pleased with the results of that night. And something tragic and scary happened, but a lot of things went right in order for that individual to listen. As a valued community, I've had some great conversations with Billy, and you know, it's just a really wonderful thing to see people in a crisis come together and work towards a really positive outcome. And it's just something I'm so pleased to be a part of. So thank you very much for the recognition for everyone here.
Thank you for all you do as well. Thank you, guys.
And now it is my honor, we are going to have a swearing in of a new Aspen police officer. This is Ethan Oster, and we have an introduction beforehand.
Yeah, you have to for the internet folk.
My name is John Walter. I'm going to introduce Ethan real quick. He's originally from New Jersey. He came here about three years ago to the Valley, just graduated the Police Academy last Friday, and he has his family up front. And his two twin girls are representing the APD well with their little badges on their shirts, so they're excited to be here.
All right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
I, Ethan Oster.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the ordinances of the City of Aspen.
And the ordinances of the City of Aspen.
That I will faithfully perform the duties.
That I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of a police officer of the City of Aspen, Colorado.
Of a police officer of the City of Aspen, Colorado.
And that I will be mindful.
And that I will be mindful.
Of the mission, values, and philosophy.
Of the mission, values, and philosophy.
Of the Aspen Police Department.
Of the Aspen Police Department.
In providing respectful, thoughtful, professional services.
In providing respectful, thoughtful, professional services.
To any person seeking assistance from me.
To any person seeking assistance from.
Welcome to the Aspen Police Force.
Thank you, guys and gals, people, humans.
I've got one more proclamation, but I'm gonna hold that, and I'll do that during my comments. It's time for citizens' comments and petitions. Any members of the public that wish to address council on items that are not scheduled for public hearing on our agenda, we do ask you to keep your comments to about three minutes so that everybody has a fair and equal opportunity for comment. We'll start with those that are in the room. Lettingham, come on up. Yeah, please come to the table.
Hello. Good afternoon. I am Gordon Lettingham. And I'm humbled to be here in person in a town that my family has been here for over a half century. And I am here to speak about and make a request about short-term rentals. I own a unit in town in the Cooper Street Lofts at the corner of Cooper Street and Aspen. And my mother built it in the 1970s with a partner, John Gin. It's a sixplex. It has been, she has owned three studios there since then, and they've always been rented short term. My mother, Norma Dahl, had the Snow Queen Lodge. She passed away two years ago during COVID. My family and Marge had the Little Red Ski House. So I grew up in hospitality. I am now here trying to live in my unit and rent it part-time in the year. In listening to the STR proposal rules and regulations, there's some limitations for owner occupied. And whereas our unit has always been short-term, I'm asking a request that council consider rules that allow us to keep that unit short-term without limitations. It is technically outside of the lodging zone at the corner of Aspen Street, but it is sandwiched between the Snow Queen Lodge, which is a lodging overlay, and across the street is lodging, which is 210 Cooper. We are surrounded by multiple lodging projects. So in looking at the rules for STRs, I really think that our unit and our type of property should be included in the STR categorization without limitation. Our unit is across from the bus stop. It is a block to the Limelight and Wagner Park. It's two blocks to the mountain. Historically, these condos have always been short-term all over our neighborhood, even though it's in R/MF, residential multifamily. In all the hearings I've seen and the printouts, there seems to be a designation that R/MF is a limited zone. And ComDev is trying to reduce the permits to 75%. I don't think that's appropriate. Okay, that's my three minutes. I'm up.
He's being very attentive to time.
A request is consider properties like this who have local owners, long-term history for short-term, people live in there part of the year but not all year, they live in summer, whatever. Please look at this as a type of property that has to be included in short-term without restriction and is a basic part of the growth of Aspen from the 50s. So, um, yeah, I think that's enough.
Sure. Gordon, I said a question, and Gordon reached out to me. He may have to you guys as well. I suggested he kind of come in and talk to the group. Gordon, when we spoke, I understood that you had historically STR'd this place, but had missed the deadline, and so you didn't have a permit, and you were trying to figure out how to get a permit. What I'm now hearing from you is that you do have the ability to rent, it's just that you don't want the limitation that comes with an owner occupied thing. Is it both, one of those? Can you clarify?
We do not have a current permit. We have an inactive permit according to muni revs, because when COVID hit, instead of going short-term, my family started to rent.
Longer than 30 days.
Or longer.
Yeah.
And we thought, okay, when COVID goes over, then we'll apply for the permit. And we were in Seattle taking care of elderly family members when in December the ordinance was passed, the moratorium. And I missed that.
So that is what happened. It's special.
Okay, understood. And I can understand that, you know, for myself in the vacation rental space, you know, we highly encouraged owners to go longer term during COVID. We thought, hey, you're not going to rent it. Wouldn't it be so nice to serve community, right? So I get that. I appreciate you clarifying. I know we're not going to, you know, really talk about or solve this tonight, but when I did speak to them, you know, it occurred to me that, you know, what we're really trying to do with the totality of all these things is to maintain the fabric of our community and really to serve most those who have, you know, been part of it the longest. And so, you know, should we look at some administrative process for, you know, someone who accidentally fell through the cracks where if you've owned it for 20 years and short-termed it 70% of that or something, that there's a process to come back in if you've accidentally been kept out? But just something to think about.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, guys.
Ward has a question.
Oh, Ward, yeah, go right ahead.
I think you've covered it. I think we're good.
Yeah, thank you. I'm gonna shut off video because it's bandwidth. You've historic, Gordon, you've historically rented this property, but you have not been collecting sales or lodging taxes, is that correct? And you don't have a permit? Do you have a business license?
We have a business license. We do not have an active permit. However, we have always paid tax, but it was under the umbrella of the Snow Queen Lodge. The old rules kind of bundled it, and they didn't even separate it by unit and bedroom. And that's how we always paid taxes, lodging taxes since inception, since 1972, when my mom got the lodge.
I would suggest that we consider this as part of an exemption from, as one of the lodges that we've exempted already. But I wanted to, I understand what your circumstance is, and I'm willing to listen to it. It's in a multifamily residential neighborhood that we decided to treat as a neighborhood. So thank you for your comments, and we'll look into it, and we'll discuss it with staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Philip, I just had a question for you, if you don't mind coming up to the table for a quick answer. Their circumstance in particular, others in this area, or property type, or I don't know that there's a whole bunch like this, but nonetheless, is there an appeal process? So when we get through with some of these STR regulations that we're going to be doing, is there already a conceived appeal process for somebody who thinks that they aren't fitting into our categories correctly or something like that?
There's an appeal process written into the draft ordinance that would cover anybody who wants to object to how any of the rules are being administered, right? So it doesn't really matter what the objection is. If somebody wants to appeal the administration of the ordinance, there's a path to do that.
I guess, I guess, we don't need to talk through all the details and solve this tonight. I'm just wondering if we can ask Philip to sort of, you know, look at this case and just, when we next come back, say, hey, is there a reasonable path forward that could address this type of situation that would not undermine the intention of the regulations writ large?
Yeah, I don't know, are you talking about this one particular case? Or are you talking about looking at the RMF Zone District?
I'm not, I'm not talking about the RMF Zone District. I feel strongly that we've handled that the right way. But for people who have sort of fallen through the crack in the last, you know, two, three years, but are of the type of individual who, you know, we're hoping did not negatively impact for this, is there a means to catch all for that type of situation?
I don't know what that means for your workload or how much you even know about their situation.
I and my staff have spent a lot of time with the Lettingham's. We're aware of their situation. I feel pretty well briefed on it. We can look at potential solutions and bring something back, but it has to come with the caveat that, you know, the degree to which we start to respond to specific circumstances, the more complex regulations get to both administer and to understand. And I would be concerned about how that could translate into the quality of our work product, but we'll explore some solutions.
Just to add some clarity, I share your concern. I'm not asking for us to imagine the 100 other hypotheticals are out there or try to capture them. You know, it's just if we can, and this is for staff to do, not for me to make the judgment on, but if we say, you know, that the Lettingham's are, you know, a very long member of our community that just missed the deadline but have historically, you know, operated an STR, you know, are there some basic criterion of, you know, if you've owned the place for 20 years and you've STR'd it for 75%, you know, there's an appeal process? Because there's a distinction between saying there is an appeal process, and then there's an appeal process that could yield a change.
I understand the intention and we will endeavor to find some solutions.
If I could just chime in here, I think that we have not even seen a first reading or second reading on an ordinance. When we, when we go through that, there will be an appeal process. Philip has indicated that. If this one does not receive a vacation rental or a permit, then there will be an appeal process, and we can look at it further, or staff can look at it. But let's not start making one-offs. Let's try to make this fall in the appeal process. And let's see what the proposed ordinance looks like and take it one step at a time. Thank you.
Thanks, Ward. Thanks, Philip. Appreciate that. Other citizen comment this evening? I'm looking in room first. And I'll look online. One second. Seeing none online. All right. Yep, Junior, come on forward. Thank you. What's up? No. No. Okay, guys, Junior is back. Wanted to get some clarity around his request. And his request at this time is to not administer the $500 a day fine after the 13th, which is this Friday, up until his hearing on the 21st of June. But there's some other information around this, so it's coming back to us so that we're all clear about the request. So I might need Philip up here to answer a few questions as well. Again, the request is to not administer the fine. They have an existing roof structure over their patio that they are in for a permit for a very similar roof structure. The roof structure that's up now is how many square feet?
I'm not sure I mean it right now, but tomorrow morning we're gonna reduce it to 499.
Okay, so right now it's maybe 550, 600, whatever it is, 600 square feet or something. And they, the code that they're, the permit that they're applying for, I believe, is a patio covering of 400.
Of 499 square feet.
Of 499 square feet, okay. So Mez is asking to leave the structure up, not only leave up the structure that they have currently, but to modify it down to that 499 square feet.
Yeah, tomorrow morning.
And then, and this is where process kind of comes in, because the questions that we had from some council members was about that timing. If this roof structure is allowed to stay up till the 21st, what happens on the 21st? Philip?
It's my understanding that Metzaluna has applied for commercial design review, which is a P&amp;Z board review. And on the 21st, they will review that application and either approve it or deny it at that time.
And if it is approved, what's the next step?
Then Metzaluna would submit a building permit i-if they wanted to follow through on the project, assuming they would actually want to build the thing they got approval for. Sometimes people do that. They would put together a building permit application, submit it to the building department, and then have their permit reviewed and issued in accordance with building department regulations.
And as of right now, the representation is that because they're going to be scaling the roof back to 499 square feet, the, what they're applying for, their goal is to utilize the actual roof that is currently there?
Yes, we need to add two structural beams, posts, support posts to the roof. That's what the structural engineer came, he looked through it, and that was, the application was submitted by Amos. And that's what needs to be done to make the roof, you know, safe and up to code with those two additional beams.
Okay, so it would stay up. This is kind of the new information, is that it would stay up. They're looking to reuse this existing roof. So if that approval goes through on the 21st, it would still take a couple of weeks to get the approval for the actual structure?
To get a building permit issued, yes, that would take some time.
Okay.
And obviously, we can't apply for that just now or get the support beams, because, you know, we don't want to go and spend the money. And then if we did get denied, but if we did get denied, then on the 22nd, we'd pull the remaining part of the roof down.
And you can only apply for a building permit once you have whatever land use approvals you need anyway, so it's kind of one step at a time.
Kind of catch 22.
Okay. Any questions from council members?
No questions. I do have a comment.
Ward, any questions at this time?
Well, yeah, I think I've been on record on this, that I think that it's, first of all, nobody likes to say no. And Junior, his long history with help coached my daughter in soccer back when she was in high school and acknowledged as valued members of our community, my concern is that we're more or less circumventing the whole process. And as the first step is a hearing, then it's a review, and then it's HPC review. And my just cursory look at it is that street-level public amenity, if this qualifies as a public amenity, has to be open, open to the sky. I, I don't want to go to war over this, but I don't favor making an exception when everybody else that has applied for and been denied has removed the structures. A lattice work open to the sky would be, provide some of the same benefits. Umbrellas would provide the same benefits. I don't, I wouldn't project whether this is gonna go through months of hearings and building permits and construction. And in the interim, we would be allowing a structure that is not allowed and setting a precedent for somebody else to build a structure and have it remain up while they go through the process. So although I acknowledge the benefit Junior and Metzaluna have to the community, I think it's a due process thing that I think at the last meeting, I said if the permanent roofs come down, the rest of it can stay up until until it's gone through its process. And that, I'm afraid, is what my position is on this.
Okay, thank you, Ward. Comment?
Yes. The last time, this question was before us. There were three places that were asking for special dispensation. And as Philip just pointed out to a different subject, making exceptions creates more complexity. Now, once we talked about this at the last meeting where it was discussed, we got a response from Jing, very gracious. We got a response from Michola, more than gracious. And we got a response from Metzaluna, it was much less than gracious. And I have a hard time rewarding bad behavior. The one thing that is in your favor is I am against throwing stuff away that's perfectly good. So I will let this go forward, but I'm not happy about it.
Understood. I have a question. Is there, if they are granted moving forward with the permit process, is there mitigation for a roof over pedestrian amenity space?
Generally speaking, yes, there is a path for reducing the size of pedestrian amenity space on private property, which involves paying some sort of fee. I don't know the exact extent of the fee that they could be subject to, because I haven't reviewed the application, it hasn't been approved yet. There's some variables there, but broadly, yes, there's a path to reducing the size of your pedestrian amenity. To Councilmember Hahnstein's point, covering pedestrian amenity constitutes reducing its size. And so that path would involve some sort of mitigation fee.
Junior, are you aware of that?
Yeah, I think it's gotta be 25%, and I think based on the buildings, what I'm led to believe, which we have 25% or more. Amy believed that as well. And if it's not, then it's $100 per square foot of a fee that you pay. That's what I'm led to believe.
Okay. I guess the only last question is really about those, about four weeks, whatever, the permitting for the building permit, right? So they get the design review, they get an affirmative on that, then there's four more weeks, probably as permit is in process, something about four weeks. So this request is really to leave this up to the 21st. If it's a no on the review, if the answer is no on the 21st, the structure would come down?
Absolutely.
If the answer is yes, you can go forward with your building permit, it would still stay up because you are going to reinforce it with the steel?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna start with you. Still in support?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the request. We got a whole bunch of moratorium work about not demolishing things. So I think to demolish something that's gonna go right back up is, I understand how we're in this pickle, but it just seems silly to me. So, you know, I got the one question that was outstanding for me answered, which is if it's not approved, what happens? Gone the next day. So that seems perfectly reasonable to me.
Okay. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to emphasize that it is very important for the city to to treat people who are in similar-like positions equally. And I don't want to necessarily define what their position is now. It has been made clear that they have an application present or submitted. They have a hearing set. I do not know whether others are in similar or exact positions as this applicant, but I do want to make certain that council understands that we need to treat everybody that is in a similar or exact position equally. So there may be others out there, that's all I'm saying, that are in a similar position, and we will need to treat them similarly.
And just to clarify, Jim, I do understand that. While I understand the need to treat people fairly and that there may be things out there we don't know about, I don't view this as precedential. You know, it's not, it would not be the same situation in my mind if someone went out and built a bandit structure, put in an application on it and said, we're doing this. This is the result of a very unique situation at a particular time as a result of COVID, so.
No, and I understand that, and I appreciate that, and that's very important, and I do want that recognized. However, there are others who did similar things during COVID. And I just want to make sure that I don't know if we know all of the similar circumstances, but there may be, and we would have to treat them equally. So that's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you. I just wanted to get that on the record, too.
And then, so the day after the permitting, if it's approved to go forward with the building permit or submit the building permit, they can submit that the very next day?
Theoretically, if they have a building permit application assembled, yes, they could submit the day after they receive their planning approval.
And it'll take a little bit of review, so that's that three or four weeks. During that three or four weeks, well, we don't see situations like this, but during that three or four weeks, it would not be allowed to be there?
Yes, and thank you for identifying that period as being problematic for the city. We were very intentional with the COVID Structures Program around limiting the city's liability with respect to having, frankly, structures that didn't comply fully with building codes and energy codes present in our commercial core, and the fact that that created a potential life safety hazard for the people who occupied those structures. One of the reasons why staff has sought sort of uniform approach to this entire dynamic for the last three months is because without that, we're not entirely clear on how to proceed with respect to that liability question. And in lieu of a different solution, what comes to mind for me is requiring Metzaluna to sign yet again another temporary COVID Structures waiver that would provide some documentation for the city that they're consenting and acknowledging to the fact that they have this sort of suboptimal structure on their property, which in the event of a life safety situation, liability would fall on Metzaluna, not on the city. And it hasn't been inspected for life safety. And that situation would have to carry forward until there's an alternative structure in place that actually meets our regulations.
Okay. I think the building permit, if they submit for the building permit, let's just say that they do it on the 22nd, that building permit is valid? They're not compelled at this time to immediately pursue the building permit?
So somebody going through a planning and zoning review for some sort of land use application, we get a three-year vested property right for that approval? So they would have up to three years to pursue a building permit before that vesting expires? And then once they submit the building permit application within that three-year period, they'd have, I think, six months of inactivity, six months of inactivity on a building permit application? So they could submit and then not do anything and buy another six months? I'm not suggesting that's what they want to do. I'm just saying this is how the process works.
Do we have any ability, I know that, you know, a council member who's not present tonight, I know that concern there was about this structure just staying. Do we have any ability to require that they act on their building permit as soon as it's approved?
We would, in the revised temporary We would, in, in the revised temporary structures form that we would have them sign while they're in this transitional period, we would put administratively some sort of date on, on that, after which that temporary COVID structure approval would expire two years.
Just to clarify, we're not looking to push this and push this and push this. We want to get this done as soon as we can, as soon as we get the permits, as soon as we get the steel in place, we're ready to, to run. We're not trying to hold on, you know, till next year or whatever, you know?
And I appreciate you saying that very clearly like that, and, and, and I appreciate the sentiment there, and I know that that's very important to council. And, and, you know, we're going to want it in writing as much as we can because a lot of people have great intentions, but sometimes it doesn't work out. Ward, you've got your hand up? Go right ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I'm not a lawyer, but I think equal protection for 14th Amendment might have something to do with this, that we have to treat all people the same. What we're looking at is, I'm guessing with the whole process, would get us through at least the summer season and probably into the winter before, we've, we've saddled Comdev with a moratorium and they have a lot of work on, on their plate. The, it has to go through commercial design, I think it's in historic districts, so if I'm not mistaken, it has to have a HPC review. It needs a building permit. We have all seen how difficult it is to get somebody to do anything. So it's, it's not inconceivable that this could go into next spring before this could be constructed, inspected, go through all the reviews. So I'm, I'm just, as much as I hate to say this, Junior, I'm just going to object to this. I think that we should make the rules apply to all people equally and that there has been, there have been precedents in the past where structures are built without a building permit and it takes years and in some cases, we still haven't been able to have the structures removed. So I, I just, I do not want to make an exception here as much as my heart says yes, my rational mind and my fairness say no.
Thank you, Ward. Can I get a comment? You know, Ward just talked about it taking a year. The applicant or to be applicant is saying, our intention is to move on this as, can you, Ward just ran through a litany of review and permitting?
I, I think the only thing I'd be comfortable commenting on is that it's a P and Z review, not an HPC review. I, I can't speak to the applicant's intentions.
At, at what point of the review is that? When, when is HPC and P and Z, that's?
There were, there, there is no HPC review, it's a P and Z review on the 21st of June.
Okay, all right, so then, okay, thank you.
Building permit review whenever they submit their application.
Okay. Then if we can, if we can have some assurances about the timeline in the iterations, then I, then I'm going to stand, sit comfortable with it. I've got, Ward is, is not supportive of allowing the waiver of the fees until the 21st, which is the request at this time.
Just in the interest of making sure we're talking about the same thing, it's not such a waiver of fees. My department was instructed to start enforcement and that there will be fines associated with that enforcement, which we've been directed not to do for Metzaluna.
And I do want to enforce.
Yes.
We're not going to do the enforcement of anybody that's in a similar or equal situation.
Yeah.
So that's the direction I think we have to accept.
Yeah. Okay. I, I have enough information. I'm going to support it again. You know, if this is an issue that I'm wrong on, well, I'll, I'll be wrong on this one, but to avoid the, the wasted labor, wasted materials, wasted effort. I understand this is the structure that could potentially be staying there, so I'm, I'm okay with, with allowing that. John, I'm going to ask for your support or non-support of this one more time.
This is a tough one. Like I said the last time you were here before us. I, again, find it hard granting exceptions and, and basically paying, playing favorites. The only thing you have going for you is you're promising to reuse what's there. If you know who I am, you know, I'm about trying to decrease the amount of stuff that goes in our landfill, the amount of time that people are, I just hate redoing stuff. I'm reluctantly supporting this.
Thank you. All right. Do you need any other information or guidelines or things that we're requesting?
I, I actually do need some additional direction from council, if that's okay with the attorney and the manager at this time. So it's, it's staff's expectation that in response to this discussion this evening, we will get inquiries from other businesses who either have existing structures or would seek to replace a structure that had previously been on private property. And at this time, I don't have a response to give to them. We have not been directed in my department to run the full temporary structures COVID response program for an additional season. I, I am very concerned about our staff's ability to continue to staff that program. I don't know of a resource to be able to put on that program. Additionally, there are concerns about liability for structures that haven't gone through that program that may be present or could be replaced. And so I, I find myself in a bit of a conundrum here with respect to how to proceed and answer legitimate questions from other businesses who may be interested in some version of what we've just finished discussing.
Well, again, I think the delineation was clear is that this is an existing situation. So if somebody was looking to replace, we would not be considering that. That's not the consideration we're making.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah.
And it also is very important to this that they're, they have submitted and have been submitted for a, for this permit process for some time now. So if anybody is not in that, that, that is again, not the situation that we are looking at.
Point of order, please?
Yes.
A question for Jim Tru. This wasn't on the agenda as an action item. What is a proper procedure for if the council, if three members of council want to given a one-off on this, what is the proper procedure for allowing that?
Well, Ward, I want to emphasize that I'm trying to, to not have a quote, one-off, close quote. I'm trying to recognize that we were given direction about enforcement of the enforcement of the requirement that, that these items be removed. And councils gave direction to staff to, to enforce the regulations and they are modifying, modifying that direction at this point. And I think this does not need a, a formal action because we are not, we are not doing, as you noted, a one-off. And it's very important to recognize what you said is that I, I am trying to make certain that, that staff who's been given direction from council is going to treat everybody who is in a similar or equal position the same. And since this is how, since this is proceeding with enforcement and there's a direction from a majority of council on how to proceed with enforcement, I don't think we need a formal action. I think we need to only understand the, the intent and direction of council towards staff on enforcement. So I recognize all of your points, Ward, and they were very well taken, and this is what I'm trying to emphasize to, to, so council and staff are handling this thing in a fair and equitable manner. And we will, and to address some of Philip's concern, I think we, being the city attorney's office and staff can recognize or, or evaluate who may also be in an equal position, but I do understand there are others potentially. So does that answer your question, Ward?
Yeah, I just register my objection.
Any other?
No, I, I think that was sufficient for me to understand again, sort of what make, what would constitute an equivalent circumstance for us to move forward with. Thank you.
Thank you. No, thank you, yeah. Junior?
Confused. Are we okay to tear it down to the 499 tomorrow?
Yeah, I mean.
Well, so I guess I'm a little unclear.
Yeah.
We're just going to reduce the size of the roof just now in the meantime, and on June 21st, if they don't get approved, the remainder will come down.
Is there a, a structural or a safety reason why you're reducing the size?
Just to drop it down to the size so we get it actually in place in the meantime. And their construction companies lined up to do its rock construction.
From, from a sort of safety and permitting standpoint, because you don't have a, a permit to actually do any demolition activity? I think the building department would prefer that you leave the entirety of the structure in place until you have a building permit in hand. Just because again, we haven't issued a permit for any demolition there. And there's typically some requirements that go along with those permits, not only structural, but also site safety. And having not provided any input from the city on how you ought to go about that deconstruction activity, our preference would be that the entirety of the roof stay in place as it is until you have a permit.
Whatever, but obviously it just.
I think this conversation's important. I don't think it necessarily is, is something that should occur here. Again, I want to make, make it clear that we have been given direction on enforcement previously, and this is a modify, modification of that direction of enforcement, but there may be issues that need to be discussed with this individual and any other individual that's in that similar position. I just, we just shouldn't be negotiating this position here at the table, so I understand your points, but we can do it.
Just to, just to follow up on something Philip said earlier, would it be appropriate that as a condition of the non-enforcement, that they also agree to sign on to the liability waiver that was in place during COVID?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Junior, if you need any more clarification, ask them the questions.
Okay. Thanks, Jyoti.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Old hand, Ward.
I mean, you know, well, I, I think that's a great example of, you know, people think that, that exemptions or, or there are different machinations of, of path that are, are easy and it's just not, you know, it, it's just not.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think the, the, the complexity of the process that is illuminated through this and other examples is just, you know, like you said, we have a lot on our plate with the moratorium right now, but I think all of us have talked a lot about, you know, supporting local business more so, and so I have a hunch that in, you know, 12 to 24 months, we'll be talking about that process and altering it as a means to support them better. That's a good thing. So thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you, guys. Let's get down to special orders of the day. Council members and mayor's comments. Ward, we're going to start with you since you're far flung.
I have no comments, but I, I will just, as a side note, say that I think vacations are, are necessary and everybody should take one.
You got an extra room? Thank you. Yes, he does.
Yeah, I have a few comments. Climate news in today's Guardian, the climate limit of 1.5 degrees Celsius that scientists tell us is something we shouldn't cross is very close to being broken. The probability of one of the next five years surpassing that limit is now 50%, up from just 20% two years ago. Today, news from NOAA, the shortest snow season on record for both Colorado Springs and Pueblo. Denver would have had its shortest snow season of all time, but it snowed, so they missed it by one day. Also, the final NOAA forecast for the season predicts the amount of water to reach Lake Powell this year is going to be 60% of average. By May 1st, the spring and summer runoff outcomes are pretty well locked in, which means there is virtually no escape from a third poor runoff year in a row. It's beautiful outside, though. Fred ended on that beat note.
Skippy, I get all my happy update news from John. The only comment I really have was, was actually for, for you guys. So if anyone knows or cares, I, I moved this weekend and it's funny that every time I tell someone I moved, they make some comment about, see, we told you a studio wasn't a great living situation. And I just really want to push back on that and clarify what I think I've been saying out loud for years, which is studios aren't for everybody, but they are for somebody. You know, I'm very happy to be out of mine. I enjoyed it while I had it. I've lived in dorms and loved them. I wouldn't want to do that now. And I think diversity of housing is important because we have different phases of life. So yes, I love my new place, I'm very grateful. That doesn't invalidate the need for studios sometimes. That's all.
Sometimes a studio is just what you get around here.
Precisely.
If there's no other lodging available.
I done been there.
What do you think's going to happen to your former studio?
I know exactly what happens.
Is there a, a long-term rent going in there?
I won't disclose where someone's living, but, but a, a local employee that most people know, a younger individual in our town got a place to live right by the gondola and she is stoked about it. She's also paying far more than anyone should have to pay for that sized box, but it's better than not paying nothing and living nowhere. I think that's English.
It is now. All right, thanks for that. Comments this evening, I'm going to start by reading a proclamation. This is a proclamation of the City of Aspen, Colorado, Incorporated, 1881. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, beautify our community and are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the City of Aspen has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation. Therefore, let it be resolved that the mayor, the city council and the citizens of Aspen hereby proclaim May 21st, 2022 as Arbor Day.
Not to be confused with our day, which celebrates pirates.
And on top of that, let us make a notice for our, our citizens. This is actually a very cherished.
NOLA, oh, NOLA.
Careful, Philip.
NOLA, please speak into the microphone if you're going to make comments.
Saturday, May 21st, 2022, is the Aspen Arbor Day celebration. 30 years as Tree City USA. This is in Pepke Park, as it has been for years. And this is, there's a tree giveaway. I know a lot of people are looking forward to the tree giveaway. You do need proof of residency and there is limited supply, so it is first come, first served. Again, that starts at 9:00 AM and people do get there early to make sure they get a tree. There will be free hot dogs and drinks, there will be a Sense for Trees, which is a special sensory exhibit, kids' games and activities, bucket truck rides and tree climbing demonstration, all put on by Parks and Open Space and the City of Aspen in honor of the Arbor Day Foundation recognition. So again, Saturday, May 21st, 9:00 to 12:00. Tree giveaway starts at 10:00 AM. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Other comments this evening from me, I want to just make a note for people that while our community is doing very well when it comes to COVID, I want to remind people that it is still out there. People are still getting it, people are still getting sick from it, not just here, but in other places. So as people are traveling again, traveling in this off-season and coming back home, please be mindful, please do what you can to stay safe and keep others safe and healthy as well. My last comment for the. My last comment, um, for the evening is, uh, just some recognition of some community members that we have lost recently. And, uh, there are more than these, but a few that I just wanted to make mention of. Michael and Suzie Lee. And I also wanted to mention Michael Reveal. Some tragic losses for our community. And, uh, we seek to keep their spirit and their memory alive by stating their names and keeping them in our thoughts, keeping their family and their loved ones and their friends in our thoughts and prayers as well. So once again, I want to say, Michael and Suzie Lee and Michael Reveal, you will be missed. Brings us down to any agenda amendments this evening. I saw none on my agenda. And city manager's comments this evening. We have Diane here with us.
I'll just take the opportunity, because I don't sit here much, to remind folks that it is wildfire season. We got a scare the other day. Winds have been crazy, and that's, makes it especially scary. Thanks to the folks who responded to that. Um, and, uh, it's a good reminder to have a go-bag ready, because when it's time to go here, we're gonna have to go. Thanks.
Uh, board reports. I'm gonna go to Ward first. Ward, do you have any board reports that you wanted to share briefly?
We're just, uh, beginning interviews for, um, are whittling down the list for the core permanent executive director. We hope to have a permanent, uh, decision in the next, um, two months, month and a half. Uh, we have some good applicants. And as we're talking about Core, I was on a, a tour today in the jungle, and I was informed that Costa Rica has ninety-eight percent renewable energy with hydro, solar, wind, and geothermal with volcanoes, so. I found that interesting. Um, I think that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Board report?
No board reports.
Thank you.
Uh, APCHA, very briefly, we reviewed a variety of regulation changes, proposed ones that came, uh, from staff. The question was really just, do we want to consider these? The answer was yes. Some of the, the, the things that could be more impactful are, are APCHA's, uh, guiding regulations that make recommendations to us and others who want to build affordable housing as to what type of category and unit mix. So we'll be looking at that. In other APCHA news, APCHA held its first Facebook Live as part of, uh, its new communications and transparency strategy. There was a Spanish element, and next month will be all in Spanish, as our executive director now speaks Spanish, uh, as do some of our employees, so that's, uh, an exciting shift. And, uh, as you know, we're working on piloting the Standards for Sellers program down in the Woody Creek, uh, trailer park. We had had one previous meeting with those residents, uh, and it included board members. And the second one took place, I guess, last Thursday? Yeah. Uh, so I haven't heard back from that, but that did happen, uh, so we should expect more information. Did I miss anything? Excellent.
Uh, thank you for that. Uh, my board reports are really just about what's coming up. Uh, this Thursday, I start with Rafta and Carbondale at eight thirty AM, and then we've got a, uh, four-hour, uh, Board of Health retreat. I sent you guys, uh, council members, I sent you the, uh, agenda, uh, today. So if you have any comments, please share them with me before I get to the, to the retreat.
Thank you.
And by retreat, I mean a meeting in town for four hours. We're not going anywhere.
You're not gonna Costa Rica?
We're not retreating. No, we're not. Uh, that'll bring us down to our consent calendar this evening. The consent calendar is Resolution number thirty-five and sixty-three, series twenty twenty-two, is a storm line change order and construction inspection contract for the Pepke Transit Hub project. Resolution sixty-two, Parks and Recreation Naming Policy. Resolution sixty-four, Rio Grande Elevator Modernization Project. Resolution sixty-six, purchase and delivery of streetlights at the Roundabout. Resolution sixty-seven, professional services agreement, interim IT Director Services, board appointments, and draft minutes of April twenty-sixth and May fourth. Are there any items that council members wish to have further discussion on or pulled from the consent calendar?
I'd like a brief discussion on, um, sixty-seven, Reso sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven. All right, let's go ahead and do that now, then. Uh, this is the professional services agreement, interim IT Director Services.
Excuse me, um, Mr. Mayor, I'll be handling that one.
Ward, go right ahead.
My question is, Diane, we're, um, uh, it's, it sounds like the interim IT staff is going to be doing some assessments. I'm wondering if they're doing, will be doing a, an assessment of cybersecurity measures in place. If, uh, exactly what assessments they are gonna be doing, if they're gonna do a, um, the department organization assessment, and perhaps unrelated, but, uh, is, uh, IT gonna be old, going to the, stay in the old building? Or is it coming to the new building? And then finally, it sounds like, uh, the expenses are covered under, uh, departmental savings for three months, and it's projected that it could go beyond that. I'm wondering, uh, the housing costs, they're gonna be covered, uh, the city has to cover those if there is housing for, uh, somebody that's gonna be serving in this position. They have accommodations, and, um, how much of, uh, how much traveling do we expect back and forth? And, um, how much presence onsite versus, uh, in two-day remote support is the, uh, um, IT interim, uh, contract entail? Thank you, Diane.
Ward, I got the, um, I, I, some of it was a little bit hard to hear. Expenses and, and housing, uh, of, of the interim person. You asked a question about staff location. Uh, you asked about evaluations, um, of, of what they'll be doing here. What else did you have?
Yeah, I was, it, it, it appears as though the contract includes some assessments, and I want to know if the cybersecurity measures, um, are gonna be assessed, if our, uh, department organi, the IT department organization is gonna be assessed. And that, my question was, uh, unless the staffing was, uh, is IT gonna be ultimately located in the new city hall, or is it gonna stay in the armory?
Great questions. I'll, I'll start in reverse. Um, yes, the expenses can be covered under, uh, departmental savings. So that, that one's fine. Um, on housing, we do have housing, um, for this individual in Water Place. Staff location, that is, that has been a discussion, um, and, and it is, uh, one that, um, Scott is working on with Sarah Ott. Scott Miller's working on with Sarah Ott, so a, a, uh, a still-to-be-determined. And, and importantly, Alyssa Farrell has been spending a lot of time, and is also, will be talking with the IT staff about that and their desires as well. Um, and it's, uh, she's just been spending a lot of face time with those folks and, um, just starting to understand where they're at and their needs. With regard to, um, evaluations and assessments, um, the firm that's being hired, one of the, they, they, they provide, um, interim IT support, and one of the functions that they do, and that has been recommended, is, is an evaluation, and it typically looks at, hey, what is your structure and how's it working? I think, you know, given, given our, um, I, I won't go into detail for obvious reasons, but I don't think this is a specific IT security evaluation. I think it is more about, um, where are we strong? Where are we weak? I think, you know, when I think about IT security, I think in my experience in both the, um, IT in the private sector and in the public sector, I think this is probably the best I've ever seen in a, in a city, or a private sector for that matter. But that being said, it, it typically does, uh, look at both structure as well as, I think one of the evaluation points is going to be software acquisition. You know, when I, when I think about, one of the things about cities is that they tend to have more software than Fortune five hundred companies, and the reason is, we have more divisions than General Electric, right? So Police Department will have five different pieces of software that are specific to police. And if you think about that for every department, and then you look at how, what, what is the procurement process for software? What's the role of IT? What's the role of strategy and innovation? And, uh, what is the process for that acquisition? I think they'll be looking at all of those things. I don't, I will say, though, I don't have a specific list, and, uh, Alyssa Farrell has been trying to connect to the meeting and, and hasn't been able to. Thanks.
So we're gonna have a, um, RFP, or we're gonna have an, a, a search firm, uh, look nationally or beyond just the city or in the region?
Uh, for the, yes, they, the, for the hiring, the search is, is national, and I, I talked to Alyssa about that on Monday, and, um, uh, she's been doing quite a lot of work on that front and has, has some quite good candidates in the pool already, um, uh, for that role. So she's encouraged and is, is pretty confident about that interim timeframe. And, you know, we don't always bring in someone from the outside. I think our IT staff has an amazing amount of work on their plate, and they do terrific work. But having someone else who's gonna come in and handle kind of just some of the, um, executive level functions as well as just help us in that process of transitioning to a, a new person is going to be helpful. And I, I do wanna, I do wanna. Sorry, go ahead.
That, that answers my questions, and we, we've gone through this process and are going through this process with Core, where somebody came in as, uh, from outside the organization and has acted as the interim, um, ED. And, uh, it's served Core well, I think, so I appreciate the approach, and thank you for your, for your explanation.
And, and thanks, Ward, because that, because I think that's quite a good analogy, right? I, I think Core brought in someone, um, to help staff go through a transition, not because there was something wrong, right? So this is very much in, in support of staff and in support of the organization, uh, not, not a fixing something. Thanks.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
One second.
Well, all right. Uh, we have a motion and second for the discussion?
I missed Ward's shirt in background. It was giving me joy.
Could we have a roll call vote for consent calendar?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hahnstein?
Yes.
Counselor Mazero?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, he moved locations.
Is that live?
It's so good. That's a white shirt, just if anyone watching, that's a real bird.
I did see him today. Several of them flying back and forth.
Um, we have no notice of call-up this evening. We'll get on to first reading of ordinances. This is ordinance number eleven, series twenty twenty-two, municipal code revision for trails.
Happy trails.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Council members. Jealous of Ward being in Costa Rica.
Ditto.
For the record, my name is Matt Kuhn. I'm the Parks and Open Space Director. I'm joined today with Brian Long, who's our Trails Manager. We're, we're happy to be here today. Uh, usually, we're not here in the ordinance world. It's been a number of years. Certainly longer than Brian and I can remember, but since we've gone and revised our ordinances as they pertain to parks, trails, and open spaces. Uh, about nine months ago, we, uh, decided it was time to, to review the, uh, trails section and those, uh, ordinances that are pertinent to trails. Uh, and Brian's worked with our Open Space and Trails Board, uh, with the pedestrian bicycle safety team and a number of others to, to work on this, and special thanks to the Attorney's Office for helping work with us through these steps. So I want to hand it off to Brian to kind of elaborate, uh, what we're looking at and seek any kind of direction from you all for the second reading. So with that, Brian Long.
Thank you, Matt. As Matt says, some of these have, uh, are kind of timeless and have been, uh, talked about around the Parks Department for some time, like announcing as you pass, uh, requiring bells on rental fleets, and, uh, codifying the signage that, that guides user behavior on the Nordic Trail system. A lot of that has been very, very long time in need. Some other of these ordinances are in response to recent trends that have come about in the last four or five years with, uh, the abundance of e-bikes and, uh, rental e-bikes on the trail system, and how that changes the dynamic out there in, in the trails for our, our local and visiting users. So, uh, some of the, some of the things that will be proposed here are, you know, the requiring that the trail users announce as they pass, which is really sort of a cornerstone of, of trail etiquette. And, um, all, all of these, of course, will be accompanied with an ongoing education effort that the city, county, uh, Glenwood Springs, and Rafta are all engaged in each year in trying to promote trail etiquette out there on the trails. There are changes to what vehicles are allowed on the trail system, allowing all three classes of e-bikes on the city's trail system, also allowing other powered devices such as one-wheeled powered skateboards on the trail system. Uh, this is on advisement of the city's Open Space and Trails Board after lengthy discussion and, and robust engagement of, of the issues that that entails. And, um, it really comes down to user behavior, not so much the device that they're on. And that's, uh, what we want our focus to be going forward, that, that we're educating on these etiquette principles and, uh, that this code reflects that. Our ranger staff, which has grown to four for the summer season, for the first time ever this year, is looking forward to going about their business of making sure everybody plays well with each other out on the trail system as they usually do. And, um, these codes would, would help give them, uh, a toolkit for doing that job even better than they already do.
We're gonna keep it pretty brief unless you have specific questions.
Ward, this is, uh, first reading of ordinance number eleven, so, um, anything for first reading? Any information or, uh, anything you need back on the second reading?
Uh, excuse me, just an idea that I know in San Diego, they have some geofencing that limits the speed of e-bikes on, uh, their, their, uh, trail system. So just would be curious if that could be implemented here in the, in, in the interest of safety.
San Diego?
Yes.
Ward, is that on?
I'll get you specifics on that.
Ward, do you know if that's on rental bikes?
I think it is on rental bikes. I think geofencing works for golf courts, golf carts on the, uh, golf course. So the geofencing, I think the technology is there. Brian, I'll try to get you information, uh, on that when I, when I get back.
And these guys, these guys will research it.
Ward, one thing that we, we didn't mention that I think is worth mentioning, uh, in this first reading is Brian spent quite a bit of time on foot, visiting all of the, the bicycle shops in town, providing a copy of the municipal code suggested revisions, uh, to them. And, uh, we're also part of the broader conversation about e-bikes and their ultimate destination of being the maroon bells and other valleys, uh, around us here. So all of that stuff's connected. Um, one of the things that is a requirement within the municipal code is for rental fleets larger than five bicycles, uh, we are looking to, uh, kind of continue with the general trend that the county is looking at of requiring those users to watch a safety video that Accra's produced. Uh, it's very short, it's about two minutes, but it provides a tremendous amount of etiquette and information. Uh, so in light of asking, uh, uh, the next step up would be certainly asking, um, rental fleets to install GPS that might affect, uh, that. Uh, we're, we're taking these first steps that are focused on etiquette and our rental fleets, uh, at, at that level, so, thanks.
All right, we need a motion to read.
I'll make a motion to read ordinance eleven, series of twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to read ordinance 11, series of 2022. I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second for reading ordinance 11. Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote for reading of ordinance 11, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Mazero?
Yes.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes.
Ordinance number 11, series of 2022, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Aspen, Colorado, amending Title 24, Chapter 12 of the Aspen Municipal Code.
All right, any other follow-up information for coming back? I guess the only thing, the only thing I had pause about was the e-bikes on paved trails versus natural, I guess it's called?
Natural surface trails.
Yeah.
Less than five feet.
Yeah. And these are, this is all classes of E's. So we don't have a, like a class one prohibition for certain trails. We're treating them all the same.
This is an important question, something we spent a lot of time with our board about.
Actually, it would be probably a class three, I think, is the faster. Class one is like pedal assist. Class two has maybe a speed rating.
Class two has a throttle.
Throttle.
And a pedal assist usually. Class three is pedal assist also, but eight miles per hour faster top end.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering.
So the reason there's this provision about soft surface trails less than five feet is the city has a limited inventory of single track trails. So that's what we're really excluding from e-bike usage at this juncture. It's important because while we have a limited portfolio of e-bike, or sorry, single track trails, our neighbors, Picken County and the Forest Service have extensive inventories of trails. So this provision aligns with their current code as well. And our board, as well as staff, feel that it's important to align with those other jurisdictions because many of our single track trails go straight into single track trails that are managed by other agencies. And so while in theory, we could write a code that would say we, we would allow e-bikes on single track, that's a very, very limited length of trails actually. And most of the single track trails that we, we know and love around here are not under the city's, city's codes and jurisdiction. And I, I do want to emphasize, this was a long discussion with our board. And ultimately, they landed that at this juncture, the city should work in partnership with the agencies outside of our, our general area.
And if there was a violation, there's a ticketing process?
Yep.
I guess our, our rangers, our Parks and Open Space Rangers would be the ones that would be observing and trying to administer any warning or violation or ticket that you...
So Brian touched on this and while, while we can, I'd like to emphasize our, we've grown our ranger staff over the last three years because of increasing usage and just general trends. And so our rangers really focus on education first and foremost. They are tremendous at that. Brian's been part of that program for many years and they're always aiming to provide first education before any kind of violation, fine or, or a ticket. But the provision with this, or these ordinances does allow ultimately for some violation source, pardon me, for some punitive tickets to be written if needed.
At, at second reading, I'll want to kind of just iterate that for the public knowledge.
Absolutely.
Thank you. We could have a motion, ordinance 11, on first reading?
I'll make a motion to approve first reading ordinance 11. Yes, Ward.
I think he jumped, you know?
Did he? You got it. I second Ward's motion.
There you go.
There you go.
Thanks.
Internet's fast, man.
Oh, we, yeah. We have a motion and a second for the discussion, seeing none. Could we have a roll call vote for ordinance number 11 on first reading, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Mazero?
Yep.
Mayor Torrey?
Yes.
Thank you all.
We'll see you soon.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Matt.
We have no public hearings this evening. We, that brings us down to our action items and this is the food truck discussion.
Woo-hoo. I'm hungry.
Me too.
Would you bring us a food truck? I would like some food.
Right outside.
Oh, amazing. I'll be right back.
You guys all right if I share my screen?
Please do.
See you, Matt. Thank you. Allergies.
All right, all set?
Yep.
Good evening, Mayor Torrey and Aspen City Council. CJ Elmer, Director of Environment Health and Sustainability. And with me is the man who needs no introduction, Philip Zupino. We're here tonight to provide some information to a question that was raised back on April 18th at council work session. That question was, can food trucks operate in the public right-of-way in the area surrounding the city hall campus? So to start off with a little bit of background on the current rules and regulations that govern that type of activity, the land use code currently allows for this type of vending to occur only on private property and in commercial zone districts. So not on public right-of-way and not in publicly zoned places. There is a provision in municipal code, section 1504350, that would allow for this type of vending to be permitted if a vendor enters into an agreement with the city manager. So options that council could look at to provide food trucks on or around the city hall campus, what I just mentioned, was section 1504350 of Aspen Municipal Code, council could request the city manager to enter into a contract with a selected food, food vendor to serve food on the right-of-way. If, if council elected to go in that direction, the rest of city staff would work with a selected vendor or vendors to ensure that the additional requirements for the city of Aspen, things like a food service license, a business license, following local air quality regulations and safety protocols for the right-of-way with the engineering department were all followed. I think it's important to note that if council elected to go in this direction, this can be very time-bound. So that agreement or arrangement with the city manager could go for three months or five months or six months or whatever city council wished to set for a timeframe. Moving down the list of potential options, city council could elect to amend the land use approvals that govern the PD for the city hall campus. In doing so, council could direct staff to go in and, and bring back an amendment that would allow for food trucks in non-commercial zones such as the public zone that underlies this particular campus, but do it only for the area governed by this PD. So that gives you kind of a boxed in place where we make an amendment to allow for vending on public right-of-way or on public space. This would likely only impact this section of town. This would also take some time to do. Three to four weeks at a minimum for a planning and zoning review, depending on kind of what the planning and zoning commission councils or calendar would look like. So starts to push timeframes back a little bit before we could bring this type of thing back and enact it. The most complicated and longest lasting option would be to amend the city's land use code, section 26470090, section E, could be amended in a couple of different ways. One, we could consider the plaza area, for example, a mall and offer a mall lease similar what, to what we do on the walking malls and allow vending in a leased area similar to what we do in our brick mall areas. Or we could amend the code to allow for vending on public property outside of the commercial zone districts that it's currently allowed in. The potential downfall here, one, it would take some amount of time to get done because it would be a significant land use code amendment. And two, this could potentially allow for similar activities in other areas beyond just the area surrounding city hall campus. So just a little bit farther reach to making that, or significantly farther reach to making that amendment. Those are kind of the three main options that we identified that could allow for this type of vending. In addition, I think some things to keep in consideration were brought up in, in Sarah's city manager comments. A couple of highlights there are the impacts on existing local serving businesses, the prioritization of taking this issue on at this time. And then also if we elect or if council elects to move forward with this, are there specific regulations and requirements that we want to put on food vendors to allow somebody to become a potential viable applicant? That's all the exciting information that I have to provide on this topic. Turn it back over to council for your discussion.
CJ, probably the other one I do, I would like to bring up would be the impact on staff, right? We are understaffed right now. And CJ's team in particular, who would be managing this program, is all a little short-staffed right now. And a couple of his folks have gotten some cool jobs in other places. And, right, I think, I think when I look at this issue, it's really, it's, unless you're looking at a wholesale change to how food trucks operate in the community, it does, it does affect typically low-cost restaurants and other alternatives. And it will have a significant impact on staff. And you are, as you know, you're having, I think it's on June 20th, you've got a prioritization discussion on a number of projects that are happening in capital asset, which include, I think, one of the, your options for the armory is, is a food hall. And including in that discussion will be the taster's space. Thank you.
Thank you.
John?
I think at first blush, I was very interested in food trucks. But the two things that Diane just pointed out, it's the work burden that staff already has and the fact that it would compete with other low-cost food providers. I think that's enough for me to say I don't support this going forward at this moment, especially with the taster's space and the food court coming up fairly soon. Thanks.
Thanks. Before I get comments from Ward and Skippy, I want to share what Rachel sent to me today on the food truck concept. She says that she would rather spend the time and dollars getting the taster's space open again. It's the longer plan closure that has spurred the current food truck by Rio Grande Conversations. She has concerns that include everything from a potential operator going into debt to buy a truck because we might not allow it for more than a season or two, or potentially, or that the market isn't enough to sustain one if there was more than one truck. She is conscientious of what this competition may do to remaining lower-cost food options who pay property taxes and a lot of rent to make their food service businesses work. She asked that we bear in mind that when we do get the taster's space, there will not be a place to park a food truck there anymore unless council were to move it to other areas of town. And that's a concern to her. She thinks that there could add more, take out food service options. And perhaps there is an opportunity for a price cap or limit on some operator so that it was guaranteed to stay with low-priced menu options. It is important to her that it does have an affordability goal if it's to happen.
Bless you.
Those are some thoughts that Rachel wanted to pass on. Ward, do you have comments at this time?
Yeah, I do. I think, I don't want to open up the PD. I don't want to go through the process of land use code for this. If there is an interest for doing this, I would like it to be just for the interim. I think we have the armory that we have in a process. I think that when we've gone through the moratorium and have some staff capacity that we should and will issue an RFP for permanent food services in the tasters' location, I'm concerned for how this might affect a number of affordable food locations. Right across the street, there's Bangkok, Happy Bowl, Tiki Mana, Clark's, Local Corner, Grateful Deli, all within a very short distance from this location. I could support perhaps for the summer if staff has the capacity to park, a truck to park by the Rio Grande to negotiate what the parking cost would be by the Rio Grande Park. But I, I don't want to, I don't want to jump into a whole long process of reevaluating food trucks. If there, if there is an express interest from people that have, currently have food trucks, could deliver service for the summer, have business license, have been approved by environmental health, then I, I would be interested in pursuing that condition on the capacity of staff to handle this while we are also asking them to give full attention to the, the moratorium that we have enacted. So I'm, I'm very, I'm reluctant. I don't want to put competition against the affordable location, affordable food locations I mentioned. But if there's something in the very short term, just for perhaps the summer, without opening the PD, without doing land use codes and perhaps allowing a truck to be at the Rio Grande, then I, I, I would consider that further.
Thanks, Ward.
Okay. Subs is really excited for this conversation. I'm glad to hear Ward's comments. Feeling a little deflated by John and Rachel. Just to qualify my comments, my kind of red line on process for this is the same as I said for the actual tasters, which is I do not want this to delay the moratorium work in any way. That is our first principle and the most important thing. So if that means this gets delayed, then that's how it should go. I, I'm extremely excited that we're finally talking about food trucks. We've just been watching affordable options and sense of place and the community ethos that comes from people gathering to eat just slowly, slowly die in this community. So it's about time that we do something that other communities have been doing for almost 20 years now. I, I would like to take the most simple streamlined approach to this. I don't need to get into all of the code and, you know, make changes that we don't even know if we want yet. Let's test it out. We've got a great place down here on Rio Grande to do that. Love to see a couple trucks there for a summer season, even if it's just one truck. But I think, you know, having a couple so people can come gather and get different things would create a bit of a vibe that would be really, really nice welcome and overdue. I, I, Ward asked me, you know, will anyone want to do this? Because we've had struggles, as we understand it, finding an operator for the Brush Creek Park and Ride, for instance. I have had three separate operators reach out to me directly. I asked them to send emails so I could connect them with staff. Two of them have done that. One has not yet, but it, one's antique, and these are operating, you know, accredited, whatever, in other communities' places. But an antique horse trailer that's been converted into an ice cream parlor, someone doing homemade Indian food, which I would just love to see for an affordable rate in town, and a local kid who moved to New York and opened up a Belgian, like a Belgian french fry elevated concept in a truck who wants to drive back and work at home. I mean, that just seems awesome, like some actual creativity. I hear and I, I recognize as valid the concern about competition with existing business, but I just find that concern to be just completely short-sighted. We, we've been saying that for 10 years and then just watching all of these restaurants die anyways. I mean, it feels like we're, you know, it's like if we were on a, a little island, Atoll community and there was no transit and people were like, well, we can't have children because they're going to take our jobs one day. And we're just watching generations die until there's no one left. I mean, we're so close to nobody left. So can we do... So can we do something differently? You know, the illusion that the free-market commercial building is going to house anything approaching affordable is, is just, it's illusory at this point. It ain't coming back in that space. We have to find other space. I'm glad that we're talking about that at the Armory, but there's a lot of different ways to do this. So let's use the summer season to test that in a small, in a small way. So very much in support, one or more trucks down here. Let's keep it simple, stupid. You know, I'm, I'm comfortable with just the summer season, but let's talk to the operators. If they say, hey, I'm not driving my truck from New York for two months, but I'll do it for four months. Okay, so summer, fall, right? Like, let's be reasonable about it, but I don't want to push the moratorium in any way.
Thanks, Skippy. My support as well as for down here, not opening up the land use code more for other areas. I, with respect to staff, I mean, obviously, we've asked so much over the last year or two, and we're short-staffed at that. So those that are here are, are bearing the brunt, and I, I respect that. And I apologize for asking more ever, but we do. I, I want to support this to, to go out there and see what happens. We have had trouble locating operators for our inquiry out at the Brush Creek Park and Ride. You know, I don't know if it's going to work out or not, but I think that we should actually put out the invitation to see if anybody's interested. I, I'm interested, what do you need from us when we talk about parking or no parking fees, a rent of some sort? This, the term of it, we're hearing that, you know, through the summer season. We're, we're definitely looking to open this up to the summer season. And I very much, I agree with Rachel, we're not going to, we have plans and it's in process for that space to be used again as a restaurant space. So a food truck will not, definitely not be landing there again probably next summer. So really, the term of this, we are talking about through this summer, whether that's through September or October, not important to me, but, but through this summer. But other items, for example, you know, one qualifier for me is, I would like to mandate that this person is using compostables and not plastic to-gos and stuff. I, I, it should be compostable, and if they don't fit in with that value ethic, then I, I don't think we should be utilizing them. So I don't know how much you need from us this evening about parameters or expectations, or if you want to get the direction on basically the location and duration and that kind of thing, and come back to us, or what you'd like.
I think first and foremost, and Phillip, I know this is putting you on the spot. I mean, Skippy said that he would not be in support if it affects the moratorium at all, right? And it is in comdev, so I don't, and Phillip, you may not be able to answer that question.
Diane, not that I wouldn't support this, but I wouldn't support it until that timing.
I wouldn't support it until that was done, but given that we're talking about a one-year only, I think it, it's a yes or no.
Thank you for that question. The, the relationship between this topic and staffing has, has a lot to do with the process desired by counsel to get there. And what I've heard from the three who support it is using the city manager's authority to enter into a contract per municipal code Title 15. And so with that in mind, the burden on the planning staff in particular to engage in some sort of PD amendment or land use code amendment process is off the table. And so I'd be far less concerned about community development staff time. I do want to recognize environmental health and the critical role that they would play in helping the manager's office get there with respect to putting some parameters around this use. But we've discussed it previously and feel like, given the sort of narrow duration and scope of the request, we feel like we can get there from a staffing perspective, going the city manager's authority route.
Great.
Thank you for clarifying.
The, the second piece would be, when are you thinking about this happening? Is it limited hours, limited days, or is it whenever they want to operate?
You know, I, I think we could all just kind of say what maybe we, but, but maybe there's, maybe that, that conversation needs to start.
With the vendors?
Either with the vendors or a, a, a realistic view of what that would look like.
I, I mean, I don't see it operating at midnight. I can't imagine they, well, actually, they may want to operate at midnight in the summer. So, you know, normal extended business hours, but again, to me, the, the, one of the primary benefits of this is bringing some creative thought back into the community and affordable eating space. So I'd, I'd want to talk to the vendors.
I just want to clarify, I'm not against it completely. I'm just reluctant to engage with it at this time for the reasons I already said.
I hear that.
Ward, do you have first thoughts when it comes to Diane's last question, which was about time? That's both days of the week as well as times of the day?
Yeah, I would, first of all, we have to see if there's anybody out there that can, that has a business license, that has approvals for, through environmental health to operate a food truck. If there are people that are, that are available to query them on it, but my, what I would like to see is breakfast burrito, breakfast wrap through when Rio Grande might be closed, Escape Park might be closed. So eight o'clock or something like that during daylight hours, not to go past, not to interfere with what's going on at Theater Aspen, but, yeah, I think it depends on what, if there are vendors that could do this and what their limitations are and what their willingness is. But I, I, my first brush on it would be breakfast through early dinner.
And the, thanks for that, not interfere with Theater Aspen, right? They've got shows, some shows that start at 4:30 and they do have vending. There are also some events that will be happening in the park that will have food. And so my guess is you wouldn't want to conflict with those specifically either.
I don't know. Yeah, I don't.
Yes to that.
I don't know. I mean, it may turn out that the Theater Aspen crowd loves to be able to come out and grab something, and it might turn out that, that truck is loud and can't be there during the performance. I just, I don't know the answer to that.
Two more questions. One is, do you, does it need to be affordable food?
I think that's certainly the goal.
Yes.
And definitely.
Diane, what's affordable?
Nope, that's, that's my question for you. That's why you get elected.
I, I mean, I don't know that you put a, a dollar amount on it, but I guess, you know, I'm talking, you know, I, I don't know how you scale that. I mean, do you use your basic burger as a ground point? Or are you talking about a full meal type? So I don't know how to define that, but yes, affordability should be.
Okay. And I think as staff, right, we can look and go, a $20 burrito is probably not going to cut it. And we don't expect that a vendor's going to be able to provide a $5 burrito in this market.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, but, but part of the benefit is they're driving in from whatever market they're in, right? So they don't have to adjust to the market as much. But, you know, it's one of those, you know it when you see it. So I think setting the expectation that this is affordable and making it clear that part of what you're applying for is affordable, but allowing them to say, here's our menu and pricing, and then staff can say, yeah, that seems affordable.
And I will ask these folks for questions as well. Last question for me is, what I'm, what I'm envisioning is the, is staff being able to quickly go out to an RFP process to figure out what's available? And what would be ideal is to come back to you, not with a, counsel, what do you think? How do you want to change this? But come back and say, counsel, this is what we're going to do.
Great.
Right? Because, well, right, because if you're talking about staff time and time to, when do you want it on the street? Really letting, giving staff some liberty in recommending of hours, times, affordability caps, those kind of things.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think yes, this is a test, so we'll have to relinquish some control to achieve that. And let's not set the precedent of counsel chooses restaurants.
That's already.
Sorry, Skippy, that's already been, that precedent's already been set.
More of it.
If we get two ice cream vendors?
It's staff's discretion now.
Right, but, but from what, from what counsel has talked about, this is providing food. I love ice cream. It's generally not a major meal.
Diane, I leave it up to you. I think you can get a killer sandwich across the street at Clark's. There's some good affordable food. Like I said, three, three spaces right across the street. So it, it's food, it's not waffle ice cream.
People eat chicken and waffles for meals all the time.
I guess to answer your question, no, two, no, one, yeah. If, if all you're getting is a, is a ice cream vendor?
I think we're going to have to see what shows up. I mean, if.
A popsicle truck?
Yeah.
I think we're going to have to see what shows up, right? I mean, i- if, if there's only one vendor that applies and it's ice cream, we might say, hey, it's better than nothing.
But that's a lot of staff time and work for, in my, from what I've heard from counsel, not meeting counsel's goals of providing an affordable food option versus providing a manatee or a, something, a novelty.
I, I can agree with that. I, I agree with that. Yes, you said two ice cream trucks. I was saying no to two.
No to two, okay. Sorry, I thought that was option two.
Yeah, I get it. But if you're saying, and then if you take that further and you say, all we've got, the only applicant that fits into this is just an ice cream truck, then I, to me, that doesn't necessarily do it. But I would, again, I would leave that to, to staff to say, nope, this didn't really fit the criteria.
Great. And thank you for engaging in this. Can I hand it over to these guys or you?
Yeah, I just wanted to support what Ward was saying about the possibilities of morning till early evening. I don't see it going till midnight down here.
The police, thank you.
Yeah, right.
Thanks. And I, just for the record, my five-year-old absolutely thinks that ice cream's food. So I just, in his defense, right? But that aside.
Also being representative counsel.
Sprinkles are a food group.
Cut meal alive.
Side dish.
So there are three parking spaces, three legally sized parking spaces in front of tasters. In the event that we were to receive four or more responses, all of which could conceivably be eligible under the criteria that staff develops, would you support one in each space, or do you want to see fewer than the number of parking spaces that are down there?
Yeah.
I, I, again, for me, that really just depends on what you see for applicants. Because, you know, you're going to prob, with any luck, you're going to have a variety of situations. You're going to have some maybe that they are actually going to drive to this spot on a daily basis. You've got others that probably are going to be like, we just want to, we'll leave it there. And either we live in town or we'll commute or what, but we want to leave it there. So then you might have some that are like, well, we don't want to be there 24/7. We are interested, so I think you're going to have to kind of find out what.
That's, that's clear. Some flexibility is available to us in terms of the number and the duration in which they're in the space.
If we have high-class problem of there's three people doing awesome product for affordable, like, that's a great problem to have and we'll solve it then. And like Tori said, it may be that they rotate, right? I mean, who knows? Flexibility.
Okay. Typically, when we hand over parking spaces to private operators for some reason, a special event, temporary COVID structure, et cetera, we have assessed fees in the, in the past, not only for the use of the parking space, but in some instances for some scaled calculation of affordable housing mitigation, depending upon the use and how long it's there. Does counsel support staff coming up with, or would you like to direct us to come up with a fee structure to recoup some of the infrastructure costs and operation costs associated with using public space, or not?
I'd, I'd like to see people.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, a second will worth that. I want to see people pay affordably, but let's, let's, in that calculation, be mindful of not taking the affordable menu and just of our own action making it unaffordable.
Okay.
No, we're spending too much staff time on it.
Understood. Let's see, how many fees? CJ, we heard some comments about composting. That's obviously sort of falls within the purview of special events and how they require people to use compostable materials. But from an environmental health standpoint, are there solid waste or air quality questions that you'd like some direction on now, or do you feel like we can get there in terms of, just with this sort of administrative process?
I think we can get there with this process. We're, we are pretty tightly bound by some air quality regulations in particular that will not allow for like an open flame grill, for example. So somebody cooking hamburgers and hot dogs down there is limited to four days a year. So they would have to have a flat top. So just so, you know, if there are things that you hear from a potential applicant who's frustrated, know that we are going to have to work within the existing regulations that we have related to air quality in particular.
I think we're good.
If, if we get six applications that are all great, would you like staff to have a local preference?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. If, if that's the case, sure.
Yes.
One last question, too. We, we keep using the term food trucks.
Mobile food.
Mobile food, so a trailer, a something, but not a temporary structure that's going to be constructed down there in the parking spots.
Hopefully we've learned that lesson.
Something that rolls away.
Fair enough.
Question, should, should we have a condition that it has to roll away after business hours?
Unless it has wings?
I, I don't think so, Ward. I, you know, there's the opportunity here for somebody who actually is living local to leave it there and not be driving and not, so I would, I would not require it to leave every day. But I would leave that up to staff and their vetting process.
Cool.
And if we miss something, we'll be creative and bring it to you.
Great. Or just make the executive decision like Kurt Russell and move on. I, I, I really appreciate, and I, I can't apologize enough to like asking for more and more and more from staff. I so appreciate the work that you guys do. And I, I think, hopefully, this will be a, a fun adventure. Hopefully, this will be some of that messy vitalities. It, is, is it going to be perfect? No. And that's kind of maybe a good thing. I, I hope the burden isn't something that grinds people down, but maybe this is a, a project that can, can end up being kind of fun and exciting and, and see something happening like this, so.
I hope to see your kid down there and, I hope to see you all with your families down in the zone, and I'll be right there eating with you.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
That brings us to the last item on our agenda.
I move we adjourn.
Aye, second.
We have a motion to second any further discussion. Can we have a roll call vote for adjournment, please?
Counselor Doyle?
Yes.
Counselor Hohenstein?
Yes.
Counselor Mazero?
C.
Mayor Tori?
Yes. Thank you. Ward, take care, buddy. Have a great time.
Enjoy y'all.
Turn on your camera for us one more time, Ward.
Yeah, it's going to be dark. Don't forget sunscreen.
It gets, it gets dark a lot sooner here than it does here.
Yes, it does.
I think we're at 11, 11 degrees north, I think we're 39 north.
Yeah.
Well, have a great one. Hi to Mimi. Enjoy yourself.
Bye, buddy. Enjoy.
Thank you, grassroots.